As you see the agenda, we're going to go over the questions and our responses to your que- questions that we request for information. First, Amy will follow that up with some discussion and a presentation about some pertinent information regarding the digital learning initiative. I'll give you a brief general overview of the proposed House and Senate budget, and I'll give you some detail about that when we get to that part of the agenda. And then, hopefully, the primary time this afternoon is for you to begin to balance budget. We sent to you an interactive spreadsheet with the balanced budget as the superintendent's assessment of needs, and we structured it where you could, based on that balanced budget by the line items that we had in that budget, the big general line items increases, you could increase or decrease certain ones of those. We gave you a chart in the lower right-hand part of that spreadsheet, I think the second page, that incremented what a 1% raise would be in 10 increments. So hopefully, that was helpful if you got a chance to play with that. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead. You have a hard copy of our questions and our responses. I'm going to summarize those that have fairly long exclinations, and I appreciate the senior staff, and I appreciate Amy giving a more comprehensive answer to the quest- requests for information. But I'm going to summarize her responses. You have the full written response on each of the first two items. So the first item, Ms. Williams asked, and this is for the public's consumption too. In regards to playgrounds, do we have enough equipment across school division to support our students with special needs? The area of Pembroke Elementary is wonderful. It has this been, or is there a need to duplicate this? In our response, Amy's particular is the Pembroke Elementary Special Needs Program, playground which costs $546,378, was funded by facilities and completed on 7/10 of 2012, is indeed an outstanding and was much needed resource at that school, given the large amount of special needs programming at that site. Given that none of our other elementary schools have special needs programming of that magnitude or level of permanency, some of our smaller programs move from site to site each year depending on space and enrollment needs, et cetera. There has not been a need to invest in additional large-scale playground projects along the lines of which was done at Pembroke. Next, this is really important, I think, grant funding. Some elementary schools have been able to augment current equipment to add some pieces designed to better meet students' needs with unit needs. Princess Anne Elementary School, for example, the biggest need has been to add equipment that is appropriate for our youngest students, such as those in our general education free K program and those within our early special education programs. So let me supplement that, and it's not in writing here. We have a fund balance in the CSEP budget, and those of you who routinely attend the CSEP board meeting, those funds we've been saving because at one year, there was a possible shortfall of funding for CSEP. The next year, there was a possibility, including this year, that the state might cut back funding for regional programs like CSEP. We think that that's probably not going to happen in the next couple of years. So there's a pot of money that is available that we could use to build an additional playground or two. And Tony Arnold and his folks are familiar with that process. So that's a possibility, and we have money in our fund balance in CSEP in order to do that, if that's a priority need. Those funds don't show up anywhere because they're at the CSEP, they're being invested by CSEP, not us.
Yeah, also, just a reminder that we did add a line item for playgrounds into the CIP. So there is a little bit more money there. That's a more general modernizing all of the playground equipment for all kids, and I think during that process, you're certainly going to look at things like ADA compliance and all that, so.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I just wanted to make sure we have all our kiddos out there playing. And if y'all haven't seen the Pembroke Playground, it's absolutely amazing. Go by there and check it out.
The second question, also is from Ms. Williams. Would you please send the cost and the feasibility of expanding the elementary Spanish program to one of the schools in the Bayside area? I'm going to summarize Amy's response. Expanded language immersion programs to additional elementary schools across all areas of our city continues to be a priority through project planning in the Department of Teaching and Learning. We were pleased to be able to add two additional Spanish immersion programs, one in Montan in 1516 and one in Trampitwill in 1617, and are excited to see these growing each year. As you know, that program starts with one grade at a time, so it starts in first grade and goes to second grade each year until it reaches the fifth grade. We are currently looking to add an immersion program to the additional elementary school in 1819. It's easy enough to add new schools, given we have a strong program model in place and as being, it's being replicated from original site at Christopher Farms. The challenge now is less funding and more about finding a school that is willing and has the capacity, given staff issues, to begin to grow the program. Each immersion school, once it reaches full programming in grades one through five, receives Academy funding, budget line item of approximately $9,000. In some cases, if staffing becomes an issue, it may be necessary to use an external company such as VIF International Education to hire a teacher with appropriate language skills and certification. There is an approximate $17,000 cost for this. However, and this is from Amy, if I had to give an approximate cost for an immersion program going beyond 1819 school year, we could begin looking at approximately $20,000 to $30,000 budget request to begin to grow the program beyond what we have done so far.
Are we taking questions on these as we get through?
We can do questions right after each one.
Kempsville Elementary had stepped forward, at least their school community had, not necessarily the school and the staff, a couple of years ago. I'd just like to make sure that they're recognized as being potentially in the queue. And I understand the clustering of the ones out east, but because of the feeder pattern, the great neck, but that sort of leaves us in Bayside, Centerville, Kempsville lacking. So, you know, I think we need a plan rather than the, what I loosely refer to as the dandelion approach where they just pop up where they pop up. So if we could put that on the scope.
Yep.
Yeah, we absolutely do have a plan, and we have been working with various elementary schools across the city because what happens is, they have to be, a school can be very willing and ready, and that's wonderful, and we have been asking for schools to consider it, but they have to be able to have an immersion staff member come on staff, which means they have to be simultaneously losing an allocation through attrition, retirement, or a teacher happens to want to move. So the timing can be a bit complex, but we have a number of schools who are ready and anxious, and we think we'll be positioned to begin clustering across each side of the city pretty soon, so.
Thanks.
Ms. McLeod, my question, Ms. Cashwell would, Dr. Cashwell would go and expand on that. So I just want to clear, so you wait for a position to come available so that you're not having to also increase for the salary. This was just the cost of implementing the program. So then that teacher would teach other things in addition to the Spanish.
So, for example, a school where there's currently a full staff teaching at each grade level, one of the first grade sections would become a Spanish immersion section. So unless a school already happened to have a teacher who was Spanish-speaking and certified, there isn't one, unless they're already part of our immersion program, we need that space, that allocation, to be able to begin to put the immersion program in place. So as schools have some movement within their faculty and staff who are interested, we can then position ourselves to begin staffing it with an immersion staff member.
And so it would be subsequent, in the next year, you need a second grade teacher.
And then, exactly, exactly. And so it has to be a school who's anticipating some openings and allocations within the, not just the initial implementation year, but subsequent years. So that we're not pushing staff members out of a school to make room for immersion, but where there are natural opportunities, we can feed into those. And those do occur through attrition, so.
So someone getting their degree in elementary education would be really wise to go ahead and get a minor in Spanish.
We would love that. We would love more fluent speakers.
Any students watching, we encourage you to do that and math.
Mrs. Rye?
And I'm not sure if this is Dr. Cashwell or HR, but keeping on that subject, is it generally the same or a different pool of candidates, high school versus elementary? Because high school foreign languages is, continues as far as I know, to be a special need area.
I can speak to a piece of that, and then certainly HR can chime in, but the qualifications for an elementary-level Spanish immersion teacher are not necessarily that they have a certification in Spanish, that they are licensed elementary school teachers who are also native or near-native speakers. So, you know, some people acquire their language through higher ed programming, which would be majoring in that, some are native speakers. So where at the high school level, if they're teaching the foreign language, they would have to have the endorsement particular to the course. So it is a different pool of applicants.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, I guess we'll move on now.
The next question came from Ms. Manning. Could I get a detailed breakdown regarding the increase in the budget following the line item budget? I'm sure much of this increase in salaries added positions, but please provide the breakdown for the purpose of the increased amount. So, let's see, there's three, six, I think eight, actually, unit codes that were highlighted in this manner, indicating the amounts. We've given a response right below that. I won't go into each one. Some of these don't exactly add up to the amount, because I'm trying to give you the general, big parts of these increases, but most of them will pretty much come up. Some of them may come up with more, because we reduced other line items, and so it's hard to say every one of these are balanced, but in the budget, they are.
I'm sure it's close.
But to give you an example, that first one, which is senior high school classroom, $2,342,342,506 is an increase due to salaries and benefits. And of course, 15 positions, which was the approximate $1,141,433, were the class size, strategic class size reduction. We added two ESL teachers, one position for the UVA Fellows Program, and one for the Kempsville High School Academy. So that's kind of what we've done on each one of these. Office of the Principal at Elementary is the next one. I'm not going to go through it through all of this, but you understand how we answer them. The $909,270 is an increase due to salaries and benefits. Of that amount, $806,754 is a placeholder for the equity adjustment. And then there were five TST positions, and if you add those two numbers together, it comes out more than $909,000. So that's the methodology we use to answer each one of these.
Sure.
I won't go through them all, but if you have any questions or need clarification.
Just one question. The additional assistant principal for Brandon and administrative assistant, is that due to an increase in student population?
Enrollment driven.
Okay.
It's based on the SOQs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move on to the next question, also by Ms. Manning. Could you provide me with a cost savings impact for the 101 technology initiative for grades four through 12 rather than grades one through 12? And our response, the S, this is a two-part response. There's one-time savings, and that amount is $1,006,000. And then there's an estimated ongoing annual savings of another $0.5 million. So one-time, $1,006,000, ongoing, a half million. And then the next one is also from Ms. Manning. Let me stop. Were there any questions or need for clarification on that?
It's pretty cut and dry.
Ms. Manning asks, has the buzzer locked door system been budgeted already for every school? Currently, this project is listed in the unmet needs operating budget, but our plan is to identify in the current year, year-end money, to accomplish the necessary infrastructure work during the course of this fiscal year, and then use reversion funds or other identified operating monies in next year's budget to install the equipment. So we're going to do this, but we're going to spend two years, we're going to try to do part of it with this year's money and the rest of it with next year's money. So we're committed to doing that.
How long does it take to install one, say, in one school?
It's not a long process. How long is it? About two weeks?
Approximately, maybe just a week, depends on, you know, the set of vehicles, the structure is a little different, but anywhere from one to two weeks.
Okay.
That's infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
And how many more schools do we have that need to have it? Is it true that there's only five that do have it now?
Question, how many more schools do we have?
We have five now, is that correct? Okay.
We have five that have been piloted, there's really only one that's on our central control platform system that we use that remain pilots, it's the majority of these.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald, this is his question. What would be the cost to outfit all schools with metal detectors for both students and public entries? We are having to do some research on that, we just didn't have enough time to pull all that information together. We hope that we will be able to provide you an answer to that at the next work session.
May I add something to that? So, if that's okay. With giving us just the, how much it actually costs, will you give us a little bit of a report for the example of, you know, do you then require that students can't carry backpacks? Because do the metal rings in your binders that you use set them off? I mean, what are the other things that we would have to do? Don't go like to long lengths, but give us some bullets on, but give us some suggestions on what goes along with that. It's not just putting in a metal detector, what other things come along with it, and some of the complications that come with that. Good, the bad, and the ugly.
We plan to do that along with, you know, time constraints and all that.
Thank you, perfect. Yeah, how do you get that many kids in? Exactly, thank you, Mr. Horace.
It's time, it's time to add additional man hours, because somebody's got to man those, et cetera. So do you have to add additional staff work? Do you take away from somewhere else?
Right. Exactly. And then also, two of these, you know, the man trap and the buzzers and all of those kind of things, you know, it's one thing to feel confident that by having that person in there and giving them a quick look over and thinking everything's fine, but do you, what's the assurance?
Right. And we know that there's a time factor involved in this, too. Just like we know that we used to be able to plan 30 minutes before you take off on a plane, now you have to pretty much plan an hour and a half before your plane take off, because you have to go through all the additional security. It makes me feel better, but at the same time, I'm not sure we really need to do that for all our high schools. We'd have to have them show up at 5:00 o'clock just so we could have a 7:00 start.
There's your early start time.
Yeah.
Next question came from Ms. Rye. And she said, just this morning, I came upon a 2017 college article with an island school of security. Each considers a new door lock for the benefit of my colleagues, the article states it costs $382,000, shared with the school board at times to install buzzer systems at 85 schools. At the time of the article, the system was replaced at Red Mill Shuffle Park Elementary, cost of approximately $10,000. It was further shared that Creeds, Old Dominion, Renaissance Academy have similar systems funded through the CIP. And you say, you remind us of this unmet need in your present superintendent's assessment needs on page 23. I assume this is 340,000 secured threat identification software under security enhancement. Are there any additional costs? Our response to that is that the software that you're referring to is not the same as the buzzing systems. So we talked about the buzzing systems. I don't have the, I didn't have included the answer to the rest of this for you, Ms. Rye, we just ran out of time. And I'm not sure who up there, if anybody had pulled everything together, but they didn't need my headline to get this printed.
But just to be clear, it's not listed on this?
Okay, okay.
I mean, is my understanding correct?
Number 19.
Under technology.
There.
Where is it? Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, there, it's, that's not.
It's on the new sheet.
Yeah, it's not the same.
Oh, on this sheet?
So the software is not the same thing as the buzzing system?
Well, I think that's just.
Make sure we're separating the, yeah, okay.
I think it's on this sheet, too.
So how much is the software?
So what is, what is this software? Can you elaborate more on what the other is, 17?
So there are software technologies that are emerging that allow you to filter your divisions, anytime a student's accessing your division's assets, so each school division email, or they're going through our firewall for internet searches and those kinds of things, allows us to do some searching for keywords and things that would allow us, are they looking at the right, are they looking at things that would cause us concern about threat to sell for others? We're still in dialogue about whether or not, what our concerns are with that before we're willing to come forward with a recommendation to the board about some of that software. But that's really what that's referring to. It's not referring to any kind of hard lock systems or anything like that.
Okay, well, it was the August School Board Journal that actually referenced that, and it did mention about how that involves a whole level of communication with the community because of some of the concerns you expressed.
Correct, so we're not there.
In some cases, police officers are doing the monitoring.
We're not there, so I just want to be clear about that. But it is, it is an emerging tool that many school divisions are using to try to identify threats to sell for others, and so it's something that we're at least having a conversation about internally.
Well, thanks for clarifying the distinction between the two items on this list.
Next question, also from Ms. Rye. In the case of the Renaissance Academy in Old Dominion, whose buzzer systems were funded with CIP funds? Can you refresh our memories of whether this software was part of the original musical plans or related note? On a related note, I would be interested in the administration's position on whether CIP funds are on or off the table to fund it, accelerate, or are part of the software system for the remainder of the school moving forward. Our response to that, CIP funds will not be used to fund this need. Currently, this project is on the list of unmet needs. Our plan is to identify, as we've indicated before, year-end funding to accomplish the necessary infrastructure work this fiscal year, and use reversion funds or other identified operating funds to install equipment next year. Again, we're talking about the buzzer system.
Yes.
We're not talking about.
I have since corrected my own question. But can you, was it part of the school design of those other just buildings?
I don't think it could have been Renaissance, because that was early on before this system was even began to look at. It could have been part of the Old Nation. Tony?
Renaissance, no.
It's on the Old Nation system, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so no to Renaissance, but yes to Old Nation.
And everything new moving forward.
So that's how it wound up with CIP funds, because it was part of the original school plan?
Because it's the bill.
That's what I was trying to determine.
It's part of the bill, exactly.
But Renaissance does have it now.
Ms. Felton, question, thinking about school safety, would it be a possibility for a division to use the same security technologies used at Renaissance Academy for the buzzer locked doors? Our division is already familiar, and we just answered that, yes, and we do intend to do that. Let's see, well, Ms. Rye, this is your question. Dr. Gatlin's November memorandum to Dr. Cashwell, which was attached to Dr. Spencer's mid-year special education five-year plan update, includes five asks for year one, pages two through three. Dr. Spencer's February 6, superintendent assessment needs states that funding is included in the year-end five-year plan as a priority, and I would appreciate knowing which of these requests is contained in the present superintendent's assessment needs in general terms, where I realize special education costs are spread among multiple budget line items. So we've listed, it's a bulleted list of three items. Funding for the CSEP, the educational behavior, and venture for challenging students, and then CSEP, Tidewater Regional Alternative Education Program, and part for supplemental staff. Additional funding for the CSA has been there. Additional funding for parents, payments to parents, and that number is increasing every year. And then, we will plan, we do plan on using year-end funding that we will identify, the budget staff will identify, will be available to purchase the portable audiometers for the audiological services, so those items for sure. There could be some others, we just didn't have time to scour every particular line item.
Mrs. Williams?
Let me press me, CSA, I'm going to blunt what CSA is.
Comprehensive Services Act.
Yes.
Excuse me?
Comprehensive Services Act, if we, that, 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 we, it's a, it's a multidisciplinary group.
It combines a bunch of funding streams into it, but if a student is at risk of being removed from the home, they would go into a program like that. So it's a statewide program, but you're, multiple parties participate in it, it's a lot of funding issues involved.
Okay, and what is payments to parents?
That's basically for day placement outside of the school division.
Would that include Mary's, St. Mary's?
Good, but typically Chesapeake Bay Academy and other programs like that. Good, but typically Chesapeake Bay Academy and other programs like that.
Okay, okay.
I'm saying reimbursement.
Yeah. And Farrell, excuse my ignorance on this in college, excuse my ignorance, but why is special education spread budget? Maybe we've answered this before. Why isn't there a special education budget where you can just go to page twenty-eight and twenty-nine and thirty or whatever? Why is it all spread out throughout?
Well, it's complicated.
It'd be much easier if it was just where we could all see it at once.
We do have a lot of the special education budget in certain UNICOS.
Right.
Identified as special ed. And then we have a good portion of funding in Title VI. So Title VI is pretty much all special education. So it's a whole budget of Title VI. So most of it is in general particular areas, but it is spread out throughout different areas of the budget, yes.
A similar question was asked about seven years ago about computer costs. And we ended up with category whatever. So don't say it too loud, it may happen, and Farrell may slit another wrist.
So then just to be clear, right now, there's nothing in the proposed budget for additional program compliance support specialists, teachers?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's one of the areas that we look at every year as we're building the budget as we try to begin to phase in the funding for that. We also do an analysis every year. This study was done several years ago. Are those recommendations still valid? There could be some recommendations in there that are no longer appropriate or valid or that we agree with, so.
Any other questions on this?
And then the final request. Please also provide clarification of the five requests on pages one, two, characterized as increases due to existing programs due to enrollment or these mandated calls. These were just budget items that were requested in order to keep up with current programming and to some extent increase enrollment. They are not new to programs or initiatives. That's the list of questions and information requested. And our response is in detail, if you have, handout there. And if there are no other questions, then I'm going to let Amy come up here.
Before Amy gets started, because security has been a question, safety in that, over the last two weeks especially. Off topic, but the, there is a student walkout planned. And if you've sent an email, I apologize, I haven't read it. But the division discussed how they're going to handle that. My youth group kids were asking me all about it Sunday, and I don't know.
So we had an initial conversation about that Monday morning because, you know, that all started over the weekend.
Right.
And so DASL is working with their principals. There's, we have some policy that guides us in this related to spontaneous assembly.
Right.
And so we're working with the principals to communicate about some things. And then we'll be getting a memo out to them, likely a memo out to our community about it and a memo to the board. But we're not ready to do that just yet.
Okay, great.
We've got a little bit of time, but we are talking about it.
Exactly, but I just, yeah, it's out there.
We know, yeah.
People know, they always will not be wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready.
All right, good evening, Board Chair Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, Dr. Spencer, board members. This evening, I'm providing a short presentation to provide some context regarding the rationale for the administration's recommendation to continue to provide funding for the expansion of one-to-one digital devices for students in grades one through twelve in the eighteen-nineteen proposed budget, as well as to open some discussion around digital learning in the early elementary years, particularly grades one through three as raised by board inquiries at the previous workshop. During the last instructional technology workshop to the board provided in April of 2017 as we were concluding the last school year, the Department of Teaching and Learning provided the board information about plans to begin to strategically deploy devices to students in grades one through twelve beyond the anchor schools and with information about how instructional technology is a driver of transformational learning along with our next steps moving forward. To begin this presentation, I'd like to start by backing up a bit and providing some context regarding how the administration arrived at plans for the strategic deployment of devices by quickly revisiting the purpose of our anchor school initiative, which was launched in 2015. As you know, in support of Compass 2020 Goal Two, the division established a cadre of anchor schools in the fall of 2015 and subsequently worked with these fifteen anchor schools representing all levels to serve as a model for digital learning and study specifics in the field with respect to pedagogy and device implementation. The anchor schools were provided devices at a one-to-one ratio for students in grades one through twelve, and they received a variety of device types, including tablets, Chromebooks, and Windows laptops. The schools used a variety of configurations of device deployment to study and learn from each situation. In addition to looking at how devices were distributed, when they were distributed in a one-to-one fashion could support personalized learning, they were also studying the extent to which this was possible and feasible at each respective level, elementary, middle, and high. During the anchor school initiative, the Department of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability provided the school board two full program evaluations in November of 2016 and November of 2017, which included extensive data from parent, teacher, and student surveys. To recap, some of the information shared through those program evaluations, here are some highlights specific to the data we've gleaned at the elementary level. On the screen, note some of the survey responses from our grade three students who were provided devices for classroom use as part of the anchor school initiative. These students indicated high levels of agreement to the following statements about having one-to-one devices. Let me take a look. Here you can see how teachers from our eight elementary anchor schools responded regarding their perceptions of how their teaching practices had changed as a result of the student devices. And finally, parents of elementary-age students in our anchor schools have the following to say regarding how student-assigned devices have improved their child's education.
And I'm sorry, which grade level are these?
This is all the elementary levels. It combines one through five, the parent responses.
Not kindergarten, just one.
How about the teacher ones? Grades one through five. The teacher ones are grades one through five combined.
Thank you.
And there's a, there's a lot more data that was a part of those two full evaluations that I can provide to you if you need. I just pulled out some highlights, particularly around the lower grades since I know that's one of the questions that was raised. So not only was data gleaned from the surveys as part of the program evaluation, but informal data was also gleaned from the students and teachers themselves as they showcased their experiences through displays of hundreds of examples of how digital devices have reshaped the learning experience. For those who couldn't make it, here's a very quick thirty-second peek at one of the third graders at the showcase showing us how she used her assigned device to engage in some data collection as part of a problem-based, authentic learning event.
Student engagement.
The results from the anchor school program evaluation, along with the lessons learned directly from our anchor schools throughout monthly collaborative meetings during the initial two years of the anchor program, firmly shaped our understanding that deploying devices at a one-to-one ratio in grades one through twelve was an integral step in achieving the outcomes desired with transformational learning. Last school year, when the board received information during a February twentieth school board workshop about plans to move forward with device deployment for students in grades one through twelve during the current year, I shared this slide regarding the administration's keen attention to the perils that exist when providing devices to students at any level. During that workshop, an article was shared and discussion was had about how the division was working to ensure that we weren't providing devices for students to simply consume knowledge in a digital format, but that we were using the devices to create unique learning experiences which shift agency to the student. This focus on student agency has been paramount as we have provided a strong program of professional learning for our schools this year. So I've just provided a bit of context regarding how we arrived at the administrative recommendation through our anchor schools' work to move towards one-to-one device deployment in grades one through twelve. In fact, as part of the 2018 budget adoption, we deployed Chromebooks at the start of this school year to students in grades one through five in thirty-four additional elementary schools. I've also just shared how professional learning around student agency as a means for transforming learning has continued to be a focus for all schools this year. During the April 2017 workshop where I originally provided these next steps as shown on the slide, I noted that we would continue to infuse our curriculum to enable personalized learning. In fact, as we reshape the curriculum and the experience for our students, the field testing of the learning management system, Schoology, with our anchor schools has been shaping that curriculum redesign. While I won't provide a full update on the learning management system now as a workshop is planned on that for later in the spring, I would like to note that this work impacts the student learning experience for students at all levels. As elementary curriculum is being reshaped, there's been a shift towards reimagining the student experience. In a transformative curriculum, teachers are able to engage in blended models of instruction and students are the primary producers of knowledge. Here are a few unsolicited examples from just days ago that show what this reshaped student experience now looks like in action across all of our grade one through three classrooms. Yesterday, the media liaison at Lynn Haven Elementary sent in this photo of a first-grade student who was using her device and the application Wixi to create images about digital citizenship for the upcoming Digital Learning Day. Here, just a few days ago, this teacher excitedly tweeted out how his second graders at College Park were using their assigned devices to design and explore cartouches during their study of ancient Egypt. In fact, you can see they've also used a 3D printer to print a model cartouche. And at another Beach Elementary School, an equally excited teacher tweeted this photo of second graders using their assigned devices to visit the pyramids in Egypt through an activity in Google Earth. And just a few days ago, this teacher shared through photos on Twitter how her first graders are engaging in graphing and data collection using their assigned devices. While we continue to reshape our local curriculum to build opportunities for student agency and best practices in authentic learning, we are mindful of the changes at the state level that also have implications on the learning program we provide our students. In fact, it's very important to note that as we consider device expansion at our schools along with the reshaping of our local curriculum, the newly released Virginia Department of Education Computer Science Standards did play a role in our decision to provide student-assigned devices in grades one through five. You'll note on the screen that the first-grade BDOE Computer Science Standard shows that technology is going to be an even more integral part of the learning experience. Hopefully, it's clear to see why instructional technology plays an important role in the instructional program we provide our young grade one through three students. Yet you may be wondering why this kind of learning can't be accomplished through school sets or class sets of devices versus a one-to-one implementation. Several reasons are listed on the screen. Having student-assigned devices provides a more seamless and quick access to digital resources that are now prevalent in daily learning. Sharing devices and logging in and out provides barriers for students. As mentioned, as we move towards a learning management system, students actually have their own homepage or login page or access point, if you will, which provides them easy access to learning that's been assigned by their teacher as well as quick access to resources for learning. Not only do students benefit from the one-to-one ratio of devices, but teachers are able to leverage highly effective digital resources more regularly and more easily when students have the access they need to engage in several resources that are embedded across our curriculum to meet their differentiated needs. So I would be happy to take questions or engage in any discussion around that context.
How important is it for our primary grades, first through three, to be immersed with this technology right away? I mean, I know it's important, but I'm just saying that if we had to choose, could we go with, start with fourth grade maybe and go all the way up?
So there's probably two parts to that question.
Okay.
Yes, it's absolutely important, but balance is key in everything. And I hope that, and I tried to in a short amount of time and through some subsequent workshop presentations and visits out to the schools. We did a series of learning walks. Many of you attended in our anchor schools see that it's a very blended model. You're not going to walk into a first-grade classroom. I would hope you would never walk into a first-grade classroom in our city and see kids sitting behind a screen all day consuming information. But you would see that they would be able to leverage their device to, you know, track data that they might be collecting in the classroom, create products, show or demonstrate their learning in a variety of ways, some of which might be digital and some of which may not. You'll see them beginning to engage in early coding activities. I showed you those BDOE standards. Those standards are actually K through eight. And then, of course, there are computer science programming standards that are related to specific courses at the middle and high school level that really call for that infusion. And so that's, that's absolutely happening on a regular basis. And we did move forward. Last school year was the first year after we completed our anchor school initiative. And thirty-four of our elementary schools were in the first phase of Chromebook deployment, and their students have Chromebooks one through five. So our additional eight anchor schools plus thirty-four schools currently have devices in grades one through five. So what was proposed in this year's budget was to continue funding the remaining schools at the same level.
I see. Mrs. Williams?
Yeah, we kind of discussed this a little bit last week, and we kind of discussed this among ourselves about the whole philosophical idea of computers and how early. Because I know that the, I believe, because I've got friends that have kids in private schools, you know, the private schools in this area seem to do it a little bit differently. They don't seem to have as much technology in the younger grades. And I know there's a whole school system started out in California that's pretty much saying no technology at all. And it's where the Apple and Google folks send their kids, which is kind of interesting. So I think, you know, the long-term, I guess, results of this is is having too much technology, too much just accessing material instead of, you know, memorizing, writing. Because, I mean, not too long ago, we got an email that, you know, I think a high school parent, you know, their child didn't know how to write, you know, sign your name, you know. And so you wonder, you know, if those are extreme, one-time things or are we setting up our kids to have a deficit in communication skills? You know, and it's not just the school system. It's, I mean, like my kids, I'll say, "Did you talk to someone?" And they'll say, "Yeah." And I'm like, "Oh, did you, I didn't hear you." "Oh, well, I texted." They think, you know, talking is texting and they don't talk on the phone.
Exactly.
They have such, you know, so lack of communication skills worries me about extensive technology all the time, just being in front of a computer all the time, the eye strain, and what it's doing in other areas. So I know you can't answer that, but I think that was kind of some of our concerns. First, second, third grade. Of course, there's a balance, but do we really know what the balance is? And we can't, I mean, everything's site-based and, you know, pretty much schoolroom-based. So how do we know that it's working and balanced?
Well, you're right to the degree that we can't control everything that happens in an individual classroom. But I think we do know from our experiences and research what a best practice balanced classroom looks like. And that's what we recommend in our classrooms. So when you see our language arts curriculum, for example, there are components that are dedicated to handwriting. So there's a clear expectation of what students do with paper pencil with the formation of letters, starting in their kindergarten years all the way through third grade. And I know I've provided some responses to the board about the penmanship piece as well. So that's an active, living part of our curriculum. Kids are writing digitally, they're writing by hand, they're creating things that are made physically as well as on 3D printers. So we want our kids collaborating, but we want them to also be able to know when it's appropriate to access digital and how to do it. So while, you know, we see that there is clearly a movement at our state level, but really nationally around coding and the language of computers and being able to understand how to leverage them when appropriate, that's certainly not the only thing we want our students doing. But by not giving them that access, we're really setting them up not to be... But by not giving them that access, we're really setting them up not to be exiting our program with the skills they need to be life-ready, not just career or college-ready, but really life-ready. So it is real that you have to learn how to balance technology, both inside the classroom and outside the classroom, and we hope that by helping our kids learn how to balance it and be good digital citizens inside of the classroom, those are skills they can take outside of the classroom when they're working on devices at home or in the real world, so.
Yeah, I mean, definitely balance. And like I said, it's not just the schools, it's parents, you know?
Sure.
When you go to the grocery store, and a child can't be off their digital in the grocery store or in a restaurant, that just is like, ah. So I know it's not just the schools, but balance, balance, balance.
And using the technology meaningfully, not just for technology's sake. I mean, the activities that you saw, you know, tweeted out, it's not kids just sitting there consuming information. And that slide I shared about the perils, we don't want our kids just sitting as consumers. We want them creators, collaborators, communicators, and then using technology as a vehicle to make that happen.
I think it's important when the board's discussing its philosophy around instruction and the integration of technology into instruction to separate certain things. So you raise a number of interesting things that are sort of societal questions about social media, and the degree to which students are screen-engaged, and all of those things. It's easy to think about that and say, "Well, maybe we shouldn't have less technology in our classrooms," except that we're not using social media in our classrooms for, just kind of like ubiquitous screen engagement, as Amy was talking about. It's a pretty thoughtful engagement with digital learning resources that are really about students achieving certain outcomes that we've already identified, which Amy's talked about, things like communicating and your mastery and publishing that mastery and collaborating with peers and solving problems and accessing resources and learning to do research and digital literacy skills and developing digital literacy skills, which are both state standards that Amy's talked about, but they're also skills that we know kids need to have. And I think, you know, with respect to the school division in California, I think it's easy to take that stance if you've got parents who can teach your kids at home how to handle that kind of technology. And if you've got a Google and Apple community, I think they've got a lot of confidence in their ability when those kids come home, that they're going to have access to those devices, and they're going to be able to teach them to code, and they're going to be able to teach them to do that kind of online research. I don't think we can say that about Virginia B. City Public Schools as a whole community, but we're not a Silicon Valley community.
Right, right.
So I think we have an obligation to help our students. And I, you know, I think there's good philosophical discussion about at what age and all of those things, but I think an obligation to make sure that our students leave here ready to use these technologies in meaningful ways that are both connected to their own personal lives, but also what's going to be expected of them when they walk out. It's funny when I, you know, I think know this, when I was at Henrico County, Henrico High School, was one of the, we were the first school division in the country to go one-to-one. So we learned a lot of lessons about what that meant when we did that. And at that time, you know, you'd be in a room, and there were lots of really sort of heated debates about this, because I think at that time, technology was not like it is today. I mean, this was sort of pre-iPhone when this happened, if you can believe that. So now, if you go into any room, and when we start talking about technology, I like to always ask this question, so raise your hand if you have not used technology to solve a problem today, or if that wasn't the expectation for you in the workplace. And, you know, it's a rare hand that goes up when you ask that question today. And so I think from an educator's perspective, and we're thinking about preparing children for the future, we've got to figure out minimally how to help them find that balance, how to help them understand when to use those resources to communicate and collaborate and all of that. So it's a really good philosophical conversation for us to have and to make sure that we all are in tune with that. So to date, we've been proceeding as if this was the pathway that we want to take, I think. My hope is that it's not a budget conversation. This go around, because we're sort of in the midst of that phasing, but that if we have to have a deeper dive on the philosophy of digital integration, we can do that outside of this as we bring this workshop back in the spring.
Ms. McLeod?
And that's actually, I can't wake up without technology, because I have my sleep cycle, and it's exactly when the best time for me to wake up is, so I'm not cranky. Wouldn't you hate me for cranky? Anyway, so, but I get back to, I actually, you know, I was watching, well, the young lady, what she said. She goes, "I really don't want to compost, I just want to look at my computer here." So she did, you know, and I kind of jokingly said she didn't want to get her hands dirty, but that's where I worry just a little bit, to that point of letting them get their hands dirty.
And she did.
So I'm glad you had it. We didn't see that part, we didn't see, yeah.
And then, the young man who was doing a graph, he was filling in the graph, what is lost by the coloring in of a graph, too? And then I kind of jumped to, and Ramesh is here, he knows I'm like so pro-technology, and there he is hiding on your, but, you know, they weren't coloring in the graph. And so then, yes, a parent, you mentioned a parent can log into and see their digital portfolios, that's assuming the parent or the grandparent raising the child has access and is able and knows how and can remember their password to log into. Versus, it's very simple, in a backpack, to pull out the Thursday packet, open it up, and look at the sheets, which says, "Hey, my kid knows how to do graphing, look at this hot dog." So I, it all, this all mushes back to the exact balance of it all. And so, and the horrendous writing that I experienced with my own child, because he has done nothing but keyboarding his entire school life. And maybe we just don't need to anymore.
I think that's an interesting philosophical conversation as well, right?
Yes, exactly, right.
I mean, to the degree to which anybody communicates with handwriting anymore, and it's not that I'm anti-handwriting, there are certainly a lot of reasons to develop handwriting, dealing with my eight-year-old son and his horrible writing at the moment.
Exactly.
But I also know, you know, when you go into the workplace, the expectation is not handwriting, that everything's delivered in a handwriting. I mean, the expectation is it's delivered through technology. Now, you know, so I think we have to, we've got to, we've got to find those balances.
Sure, so would you, maybe, without spending a whole lot of time, just find a couple of those articles you could send us, that you could just send us or put on SharePoint for us to read, for those of us who are interested in the research. That'd be great.
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning?
So by asking that question, I certainly wasn't saying I was against technology in the lower grades by any means. My kids had technology when they were in elementary school, and I think the teachers used it in a very useful and valuable way, but they didn't need a one-to-one device. And, you know, if we are encouraging our teachers to not just use the devices, and they're only using it for a portion of the day, I'm trying to understand the cost benefit of them not sharing devices, not having, you know, a computer learning center like they did when my kids were in elementary school. I think having something like that would encourage the teachers who may tend to want to use more technology to not do that. So I'm trying to see the cost benefit here of providing a one-to-one device when perhaps it's convenient, maybe, but maybe doesn't provide that cost benefit, when we have so many other unmet needs of security and pay and, you know, trying to figure out where that balance is, prioritizing the dollars.
Good thought. We did a couple of our schools, our anchor schools look at those configurations, and so their responses around some of the barriers that having class sets of devices instead of the one-to-one created, particularly of the younger grades, because kids were logging in, logging out, logging on, logging off, really actually made it harder for the teachers to be able to accomplish what Jamie did with, particularly in our Chromebook elementary schools when we were testing this, because they start up quickly, and again, where the kids have their own digital portfolios, they're already logged in, so if they want to take a picture of something they created out of blocks or sand or whatever it is, they take a picture, it's in their portfolio, they're not having to scramble around to get devices, and things were a lot more comprehensive. On the part of the teacher, being able to give, know that they were going to give every child feedback on their digital portfolio, not just the ones who got to it that day. So we really listened to our teachers in regards to what made it feasible in the classroom, but, I mean, absolutely, we did try a variety of models, and there are schools now who only have class sets, not one-to-one. They might have, you know, thirty-four of our schools plus our anchor schools have the one-to-one situation in those grade levels, and others don't, and they work very hard to make it happen. But there are some unique challenges to doing that, particularly due to the prevalent nature of some of the digital resources that are built within our curriculum that kids use frequently, so.
Ms. Ryan, Ms. Felton, and then Ms. Holtz. Ms. Ryan?
Okay. So screen time seems to be the other overriding issue with all this. And, you know, I know what, and I'm not suggesting this per se, but I know with homework, we, it's a, and it's, it's an accelerated guide from kindergarten or first grade through fifth grade, and I'm not, and I know that would be impossible to monitor, but as a division or just as a school board, are we conce, do we, is it your sense that the first graders are getting as much screen time as fifth graders or less, or?
What we promote is a balance of active versus passive learning, not, so it's, we think equally detrimental for a kid to sit behind a desk with print material for hours and hours on end, as it is to sit behind a screen with digital material for hours and hours on end. So the model that we promote is active learning, hands-on learning, and so to try to tease out whether some of that hands-on might involve coding on a computer screen, some of it, you know, you're out in the compost field, composting, you're, you know, creating data grids here, you're putting then, you know, some of the data back in. I don't think we've teased it out to the minute with screen time, but we have teased it out versus active and passive learning and the amount of time teachers spend providing instruction versus students spend interacting with the content and then using rotational models and that sort of thing. So I think, you know, as a best practice, it's about the active engagement, but being mindful of screen time as well.
And if I could just add, when I personally am visiting these lower-grade classrooms, I'm always watching, just be sure I see kids sitting on the rug reading an actual book. And what I've seen, I mean, I have seen that, because if I didn't, I would have reported it. So I get what you're saying, and I...
And Ms. Felton?
Ms. Cashwell, thank you for this detailed presentation. You answered most of it about the student personalized component, but my concern is balance as well and the parent's engagement. And I use example as, I did get out to a lot of the anchor schools, and I was really impressed with the students and how they used it. But I was more impressed with Rosemont Elementary parent and student night, and the parents came in with the students with their own personal station, and the students showed the parents, they were actually teaching their parents what they were learning in class and using their computers as well. And I was most impressed with a student that had English as his second language, and how the technology taught him as well with that, learning a language and teaching his mom as well. My concern is, are the parents being taught as well? Are they engaged, how engaging them as well as the students is learning this? And it is a mandate with these anchor schools as well.
Well, we learned a lot of great lessons from our anchor schools, Rosemont was one of them, and we asked all of our anchor schools to come up with great models for community engagement and best practices, and then help replicate those in our other schools as they begin to receive their devices. So as we help prepare schools who weren't part of the anchor school initiative, they have a lot of best practices to draw on and suggestions for ways to, anything from getting students ready to handle and care for the devices, to helping parents understand beyond the parent letter and engage in a variety of events modeled after that kind of thing. And that happens at all levels, even at the secondary level, the engagement of parents.
And one other question, is these devices are in-school uses only, correct?
At the lower grades, yes.
Ms. Holtz?
Thank you. I know that kids aren't sitting at computers all day, but part of the reason why we get that feeling is we've been on many, many walks around schools in the last few years, and not just the digital ones, but even those that show other, they generally use technology, and they show that. But I do that myself, I'll go into a school and I'll say to a teacher, "Well, show me something different, show me something interesting," and they'll pull out technology, because that is the newest, the newest, and it is the most interesting. And nobody's ever said, "Well, sit down while I teach the kids how to structure a three, you know, paragraph report." You know, so we don't see that kind of thing, but I know it's happening all the time. So I feel very good about what's happening in our schools with technology. I certainly don't want to cut down on it. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan, and we do need to move on.
Ten seconds, ten second question. Could you just qualify which grades is in-school only?
It's one through four in most, some it's one through five. Some elementary schools are beginning to, began second semester to send home the devices with the fifth graders and allowed that.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't want to not support this also, this initiative, but at the same time, we all know, and I want to turn this back around to budget, because we all know we only have a certain amount of money that we have to spend. And as long as we stay within our budget box, we're okay. But where we have to make cuts here and there, I can't help but say that I did like the question that Ms. Manning asked, could we provide me the cost savings impact for a one-to-one technology initiative for grades four through twelve? Because I looked at that, and then the answer was really interesting. So, you know, because one of the things that we brought up, several of us brought up last time, was that we would like to see a little bit more increase in teacher salaries. So I'd like to spend a little bit of time on budget and talk about that a little bit. And I'm not saying I'm willing to cut that part of the budget, but it is interesting to see your response on that.
We're going to get back to that when we get to number five on the...
All right, okay.
Well, I know you've been talking about kids in one through three. My son is a physician, last year his residency, he was home visiting over the holidays, and we were having dinner out, and Chris is there on his phone, texting. And I didn't have to say it, Pam said, "Chris." And he apologized, he was usually, he said, he was so used to being on call, you know? So it's not just worrying about the kids in first through three, it's also the adults, and you might get run over because you're looking at their texts.
I may have almost fallen off an escalator recently. That may or may not be a true story about an escalator.
I want to give you just a brief overview of the House and the Senate budget proposals. The appropriations, the House Appropriations Committee and the Senate Finance Committee posted their proposed budget this past Sunday. That's the information that I'm going to share with you. Today, around noon, they posted their detailed budget of those general. It was a more detailed version of what they're proposing, but these are kind of the highlights of each, and I'm just going to go through them, I have a bulleted list. I will really like to wait to give you something in writing when we have a chance to look at the detailed versions that came out today. In the House version, here are the highlights. It increases the K through twelve budget by an additional ninety-eight million dollars over the biennium as compared to the introduced bill of the governor. It increases the supplementary lottery per pupil amount for both years of the biennium in the first year by thirty-one point nine million, and in the second year in 2020 by forty-eight point one million. It increases the total percentage of lottery dollars going directly to school divisions to forty percent in the second year. And this next point is very important. With those lottery funds, divisions will have one-hundred percent flexibility in how we spend those monies, and they do not require a local match. That's significant.
Well, this is the House.
This is the House.
Don't get too optimistic.
We already know.
The House also provides funding for the state share of a two percent salary increase incentive effective July one of 2019. Now, that doesn't help us next year, but it does help us in 2020, and it allows for retroactive, if in 2020, you're not able to give a full two percent, they'll give you credit so we could get reimbursed for what we did next school year, if we give at least a two percent. The, and the original proposal from the governor was funding that would begin in December of nineteen, and this bill moves it back to July first, so it's for a full fiscal year. And it also updates the language for at-risk add-on supplement to include school guidance counters. The Senate proposed budget, these are the highlights of that. It also updates the language for at-risk on add-on supplements to include... It also updates the language for at-risk on add-on supplements to include teacher recruitment programs and incentives. Senate version removes the language for the state share of a two percent salary increase, so they don't offer a salary increase at all. It phases out the graduate, the project graduation grant. We currently get about thirty-five thousand dollars, so that will eventually go away in this bill. And it increases the allocation formula for the BPI, the Virginia Preschool Initiative program, from six thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars per student to sixty-five hundred dollars per student. And that's about a four point six million dollar increase statewide. So, those are the highlights of both the House and the Senate. The House budget is just really a better budget at this point in time. The timeline for this is they will form a compromise committee probably within the next week to ten days. We haven't gotten the calculation tool from the state. We participated, some of our staff today, in a conference call with the state BDOE, and we'll be getting the calc tool within the next ten days. It'll be kind of late, but we will get it, and that calc tool does a more detailed analysis for each school division regarding the House and the Senate budget. By then, the compromise conference committee may already have between the Senate and the House a compromise budget. The legislature is due to adjourn on March 10th, so hopefully before you adopt the budget, that first week in March, we'll know what the outcome is. But adjournment date for the legislature is March 10th. So, that's an update on the House and the Senate bills right now. Any questions about that?
Ms. Ryan?
Can you go, you mentioned guidance counselors, can you explain more what's?
Well, the at-risk add-on supplement includes certain categories of employees and programs, and it didn't, as it currently allocated, it does not include school guidance counselors. It just means we will get additional funds if they're added on. We're going to go to the balance in the budget. We'll put the interactive spreadsheet up here. Some of you, I haven't gotten any from any of you, some of you may have had a chance to play with it. May have developed your own budget.
I played with it quite a bit.
So, this is, this is going to be your budget now. We've given you a balanced budget in this spreadsheet, so you can add or subtract any of these items, but you got to come back to a balanced budget. So, this is. I've got Carter up here, and she's going to help navigate and put the formulas in if we need to.
Okay, so what do we, what do we want to?
Well, this is the part where we just turn it over to you for some.
All right.
We don't necessarily have to put the figures into this spreadsheet, but we're back to the same conversation.
Can we ask you to do it, and it's just for, not for fun, but I mean, you know. But I mean, it's not going to change anything permanently, but can you just do this, this just?
It's not inside the system.
We can, we can do it and save that version and bring up another version.
This is way more fun than composting.
You can play with this how you want.
Okay. Here we go. Oh, Ms. Weems?
Well, I think from discussion the last few weeks and just tonight, I think the buzz system in all eighty-five schools, I would like to see that up there as a priority, so put that baby in there. And let's see, so now I have to come with something that I'm going to take out? Yeah, well, I asked for a request, and I haven't gotten it yet.
Well, let me, let me, you don't have to do that, we plan on doing this.
Okay.
So, this, we're going to do this.
From a version of.
We'll find, from this year and then for next year.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, just last week, you said, Pharaoh, you advised us not to touch those reversion funds to make them down any lower, so I don't know if I'm all for reversion funds.
Well, we didn't, we said the options for us would be year-end money, reversions, or we will identify other funds to do this.
Okay, so we.
We're committed to doing that.
Okay, so we got, that's it, so that's, okay, that's in a hundred percent.
Yeah, unfortunately, we just showed it as an unmet need, because when we, at the time we put the budget together, it was, but since then, the superintendent and staff have come up with a way of doing this.
Okay, without using reversion money?
We hope we don't have to, but it is an option. If you've got a problem with us using reversion money, we'll have to do something else.
You all, you all, every year, we present you with
A list of.
A list of items that we think we ought to use reversion dollars for, that's what ends up in the resolution to city council, this would be an option for that. It's a separate conversation from what Pharaoh was talking about regarding to reversion dollars. The conversation Pharaoh was having with regards to reversion dollars was not increasing
Right.
the amount of reversion dollars we would use in the general operating fund.
Perfect.
We're listing it as six point. Yeah, we're listing that as six point eight million, and we're asking you not to increase that amount.
Okay, yeah.
That's a two million dollar reduction from our reliance on those dollars from last year.
Okay.
Ms. Manning, do you still have a question?
I was going to say the same thing, she, she's not done.
I wasn't finished.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just saying that the, it seemed like the consensus too last week was to look at an increase in salary, so that's not up here anymore. Well, by circle, not consensus, not, 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 not everybody, honey.
Yeah, we can, we can put that in.
But, and I don't know what percent that we're looking at, I mean, I suggested point six, but there was a three point five, there was a three. So, what, does anybody else have any to chat?
Well, one of the things that's been floated around, just people that I've spoken to, is possibly a two and a half percent more, I mean, two and a half percent. But then, in December or January, another half percent. It was just kind of floated, that idea had been floating as well.
I would just tell you right now that, that from a budgeting perspective, we do not recommend those mid-year cost increases, because they create fiscal cliffs in the following year.
Yeah.
So, we would just not recommend that we do that. If you're going to do an increase, just find a way to do the increase.
So, what I did was I played this thing, and I tried to find, because I figured if we have, if we're doing a, you know, a higher salary increase, you got to cut somewhere and try to stay within this budget, not depending on what the state might or might not do. And then, you know, great, you know, we could hope that the state will come through, but we don't know for sure what they're going to do. So, so just, just for grins here, put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in column H on line nine. So, in other words, that would be a decrease. And three hundred and two thousand, is that right? Three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dot, fifty-two dollars in, uh, ten.
Can you say that number one more time?
Three oh two, two five two. And then in, on line twelve, three oh four, three eight zero. And in line sixteen, six nine five zero zero zero, eliminating that completely out of this particular budget. And on the next one, five eight zero, six zero zero, on the white fleet. With the thinking that the white fleet and the buses can be done with one-time money. So, I was just trying to come up with some funding for a, an increase in budget, I mean, in salary. And so, in column G on line seven, two million, six hundred twenty-five, zero zero zero. So, that was just, okay, and the logic here was to, for example, in on line nine, the technology initiative, I didn't realize it would be five hundred thousand, but I was thinking, you know, possibly only doing four through twelve or for the one-to-one instead of one through twelve. And on line ten, has, it has to do with elementary schools not adding eight, but only adding four. And on line twelve, additional high school teachers, not adding fifteen, but adding eleven, so that would be taken away four. And on line seventeen, I'm sorry, sixteen and seventeen, eliminating those from this particular budget and trying to find some one-time funding that we could buy, do that list.
Dr. Spence, since she mentioned the full-time teacher, the number fifteen, can you explain how those teachers are being used? Because that's not necessarily just the reduction of class size, there's a, that is specific to the arts?
It's not specific to the arts, we actually listed that this time as an unmet need. The arts positions, it would fill in some arts positions. But it would also be used to reduce class size. The goal right now with the class size, the targeted class size reduction and the specific numbers that we've given you there are to, at high school in particular, is to try to eliminate the number of teachers with more than one hundred and fifty students in particular at this point.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's.
How many would, and, okay, and, but not to?
How many, how many, where's that sitting at? Number over one hundred and fifty, do you remember?
Sixty-five right now. Sixty-five teachers.
Sixty-five teachers over one hundred and fifty.
As of semester one, moving into semester two.
I, um, just to comment.
Hang on just a second, because Mr. Edwards is really next, I'm sorry.
I don't want to switch stuff here while we're discussing this.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Edwards, go ahead.
The, it's a bit of a dangerous game if we throw these numbers out and we don't hear back from the staff. I, I know the staff is reluctant to, in this sort of a scenario, to defend things, but I think we need to bear in mind the fact that, that not only are there advocates for each of those lines that we probably need to hear from, but the balance is critical. To destroy the entire bus baseline out of the budget is, is, you know, I mean, it's easy to do on a spreadsheet, but I think we've got to bear in mind the critical nature of the balance. So, before we move towards finalizing any of this, I would ask Dr. Spence to have his team, at the risk of sounding like they're arguing against a board member.
Yeah, you need to.
I think we need to hear the impact of what we're doing.
Yes, we want to.
Right, I was just, like I said, this is, I know that this is not going to go anywhere, but I, I was trying to show, I mean, really, I was just trying to show that we have, you have to cut certain things and make priorities if you want to do an increase. So, if we want to increase their salary, we've got to make sacrifices in other areas.
Pray to Richmond.
I've been doing that.
One of the things we can do to facilitate if somebody else wants to propose something different, we can save this, we'll save it and bring up the blank spreadsheet that we started with. And if there are other board members that have other proposals, we can do that. Once we get through whatever we're doing today, we can send these spreadsheets out to everyone, the different ones. We'll put Ms. Anderson with this one. So, if there are other proposals, we can do one at a time.
Right, two percent.
We can do that. I want to say, the ultimate goal is by next, by the end of the next workshop, we have to have a balanced budget.
Right.
Because we need to have it before you meet on that March, first, that first Tuesday in March.
Does anybody else have one? We can put a blank up here, and you can put yours on this one. Ms. Frye?
Mine is more just an echo of support for two of these items, one being the added instructional staff. I just feel high school, that's to me is a first step, getting down to one fifty, I'm not going to be satisfied with that, but I, we have to start somewhere. And just as a parent, a former parent and teacher, just the thought of these, these teacher workloads at the high school level, to me, that, I don't want to touch that at all. And while it hasn't come out yet, I do want to echo my support yet again for the high school counselor positions. And I did make inquiries and learned that, you know, the current compliance ratio of one to three fifty, certainly it means, because our high schools are not perfect multipliers of three hundred and fifty, that some counselors actually have an excess of that, and that a best-case estimate is that it would reduce each counselor's workload by fifty students, which is really significant. And I think it speaks to multiple, multiple facets of our compass to 2020, the academic achievement element, the social-emotional element, and if you get down to it, the multiple pathways as well, since we want to elevate our career planning and so.
Believe me, doing, knowing that this is not real, okay, that's why I played with it like this. But it hurts even to cut anything, any of those things. I really don't want to have to cut anything, but I really do feel strongly that we need to give our employees a higher raise than just two percent.
And this is, and I just want to speak to Dan's point. So, we will be prepared at any point, this week, next, to, during the next workshop, to sort of go through and articulate the thinking behind each of those line items. But, you know, the job, our job as staff is to bring you what we think is the best absolute balance between the competing needs of the division, given the resources that we have, that's really why you get an estimate of need. It's really what it means. We're estimating the need of the division, and we're giving you a balanced budget to achieve that, those goals. So, it would be difficult for me to articulate being okay with removing any of those. But, you know, at the same time, we can give you our best thinking about why each of those is important as we go through, without sounding defensive.
We have Ms. Weems and Ms. Holt. Ms. Weems first.
I think, I think Ms. McLeod was asked, go ahead, Ashton. All right, go ahead, Fran.
Thank you, you'll yield the floor. The, I ditto to everything Carolyn said versus Ry, so that I'm not repeating all of that, counselors, et cetera. The budget includes a two percent salary increase. Most of the folks out there got a one percent if they got a raise at all, so we're a little bit ahead of the curve, go back to old lingo. So, I feel like we're doing that for our employees. And I have a hard time, I almost call it cannibalism. If you go, and here we're going to give you more, but we're going to give you more as well. I really believe that eliminating the positions is the wrong way to go in making, I, I look for quality of life as, for employment as well. And I know I've talked about this before, and some people don't agree, and that's fine. But there's, there has to, you know, thirty extra dollars may not really be humongously worth having to go through fifty other additional research papers to grade or fifty other kids, you know, so every child is worth it, but it's the workload. And so, I, I think that we need to look at that very carefully. And I know that, but if we could give them humongous raises, we would. And I feel like, I feel good about the raise that's been included in the budget because it's being accomplished. And so, I would, with Carolyn, I agree with the guidance counselors, these kids, we have got to, having a high school degree is great, but if you don't have someone helping you guiding to know what to do with a darn thing, and our guidance counselors just don't have time to spend that extra time with them, so I'll get off my set box now.
Okay, Ms. Weems?
I'll jump on that, I'll jump on that set box with you, with you too.
Okay.
Yeah, the positions, I mean, we kind of, years ago, we kind of said, don't raise class sizes, and then we went from now we're trying to lower them, so I hold that one sacred, because we hear it all the time, especially at the high school level, that the load, the workload, and then the guidance counseling, definitely the guidance counselors, I would like them to, to be able to do their job of why they became guidance counselors, and that's to guide students instead of, you know, they don't have, you know, time for it anymore. I would be willing to sacrifice. Um, I would be willing to sacrifice some technology up there, um, Ms. Anderson, seven hundred and fifty thousand, and I would, um, be willing to, um. Sacrifice lights on the ball field. That's, that's, you know.
That says a lot.
And that says, that says a lot, I, I, you know, throw, and throw that in at a point six raise. It, it, it's in the unmet here, but we've got three hundred and fifty thousands late in, in the budget already, so that would give you a million dollars there. That, and I'll repeat, that says a lot for me to sacrifice sports, but, um, I don't, I don't think that's near the par, anything we need to do yet.
Ms. Holtz.
Uh, thank you, um, it's been mentioned by Ms. Weems about the locked doors, I personally hate locked doors. Uh, and we're getting more and more to that, but we really have to. And I'm, I'm hearing parents saying they're worried, they don't want to send their kids to school, that's just an awful thing. That we would have to face that, but I think that should be a priority. The only other one I have really is teacher salaries, we've got to do that. I heard yesterday that Chesapeake was going to give their teachers four percent. If they can do that, we should be able to do that, even if we have to, as a group, go to Richmond and get down on our hands and knees and beg our legislators for that. I'm willing to do that, and I have arthritis, so. I know that locally, that's really difficult to do, but we need to get up there and, and let them know that, uh, we care, and. They're elected for a reason, anyhow, that's my comment, and I agree with Dan. Those numbers were put up there for a reason, after long deliberation, and you know what it is, you take one out and something's happening somewhere else, so. And we don't always see the reasons why those were put up there, but I, I think we should question it. Thank you.
Um, I, I will say that one of the comments I heard last week was that, um, that, uh, one of my colleagues had spoken to teachers, and that. The teachers that they spoke to said that, you know, having, getting a higher raise wasn't important, well, I made it a point this week. When I was at Ocean Lakes High School, I spoke to several teachers there, but I also spoke to several teachers from other schools, because at the time I was there. There were other schools there, um, they had invited, um, groups from every high school and groups from every middle school, and so. I made it a point to talk to several teachers from different schools to get their perspective. And so I asked them, you know, would you rather lower your class size by one student, because that's basically what it amounts to when you think about it. It's not really even one, it's, it really comes out to be point five, but you know, there's not a point five student, so. So let's just say, you know, can, would you rather lower your class size by one student, or would you rather have a three percent raise? And overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, there wasn't one teacher who said they would rather lower their class size by one student. Every single one of them, and so I'm talking about thirty-five to forty teachers that I spoke to, because I didn't just speak to teachers there that day. But I also spoke to teachers at some elementary schools that I visited this week, and every single teacher that I spoke to said, we need a minimum of a three percent raise. We have been too long not getting adequate raises, and we are behind, when you look at us compared to the region, we're really behind, so. Uh, Ms. McLeod, I see your hand up, and I'm going to go to you next.
Especially when you miss inform those teachers, the way you asked your question, your question was not structured correctly, because that teacher would assume that they would just lose one student. That teacher may not lose any students, it's over the, the, the whole school system, so of cour- you know, so the, the question wasn't. Basically, you, you set them up to say, yeah, that, that, yes, they'd rather have that, if they looked at the whole big picture, so. Who isn't going to say they don't want a three percent raise overall, and, and so, but I, I don't think we've done that well in explaining. That to them, so I'm afraid of the way you say, and I, I, I haven't.
So what, what matters is, 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 you know, how many students would you, would you lose?
So.
If we hired fifteen teachers.
John, can he, or excuse me, Mr. Merrick, is that something, can anyone, or Dr. Spence, can anyone help explain?
It's gonna, it's gonna vary, and it's gonna vary pretty dramatically by grade level.
Right.
So at the elementary levels, it's closer to a one-to-one reduction, if, I mean, if you do a class, a full. Division-wide reduction of students by one, you're basically adding FTE.
Right.
And then that gets spread out depending on where you have need, and so again, reminder, in elementary schools. You might have four sections, which currently have twenty-five students each, and if you added an additional, then you might bring all of those down to twenty, but those numbers don't work out that way. In the real world.
Right.
And it's the same thing when you get into the high schools, you're really dealing with different enrollments for different courses, so you might add an English teacher, but that may not bring down. Any science course loads, and so it's a really complicated calculus that is not really about losing a student per class. It literally will never work out that way if you reduce.
Right.
Class size by one, it just isn't going to happen, so it's really about your, what you're actually doing is creating a pool of money to create additional FTEs, I think it's. On the order of, how many, a hundred and sixty FTEs the last time we did a class size incre- uh, de- increase? So, that, it, it, that's just, it's a different kind of calculus, and it all comes down to how you build your master's schedule and where you identify your needs, and so it's, it's not a one-to-one proposition. Which is why we've come to you for the last two years saying, it ought to be strategic. So we can target areas where they've got the highest class sizes, and we can go after those and begin to reduce those, and so, um. We would stand, to Dan's point, pretty strongly on keeping those FTEs in, because it allows us to continue to attack areas of high need.
Ms. Riggs.
Okay, so, I, I'm hearing, you know, the same story we hear when we talk about budgets all the time. Uh, but the point is, and, and I know what you're saying about the one percent, but the point is, I, I just feel like. Our teachers are going to get the two percent, which is what we've put in there, and they're looking around and the rest of these, you know, the. Locals around us, and they're getting three and four percent, and I just feel like.
I want to be clear about that. I want you all to understand, Chesapeake superintendent proposed a four percent raise, which included an eighteen and a half million dollar shortfall in their budget estimate. It was not a balanced estimate of needs, and so we got to be clear on what we're comparing. I mean, I could have said, I'd like us to have a five percent raise, and then tacked on fifteen million dollars to this, and given you a fifteen million dollar unbalanced budget, but that's not how we operate in Virginia Beach.
And he's leaving.
I think that Dr. Roberts. Respectfully to Dr. Roberts, who I love and consider a mentor. He, I think he's making a statement about the financial needs of our divisions, that is. Something that he's very good at, he's excelled at over his time there, but it is not, please don't go out and say they're getting a four percent raise, and that we're not able to accomplish what they are.
Well, okay, I'm not, I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying the perception of what people are seeing. And what I am saying is, I think that we need to still look at seeing that we need to do something more than two percent. And I, I got it, we don't, the money's not there, I understand, but I know that, uh, and. Speaking with teachers and being very close to teachers, um, just because of my position and where I've been. It, that they're ready to see more in their paycheck, because they can't live on what they're getting, and that's, that's just what I'm saying.
Mr. Edwards.
The, uh, the good news is we've got a balanced budget in front of us, if there is more money that comes down from Richmond. We can sustain that balance and, and factor it into what I think we're hearing in terms of priorities, so. I, I wasn't, I was absolutely serious when I joked about praying to Richmond, when, yeah, I think. We need, need to do more than pray, we need to, a- as others have pointed out, uh, especially Dottie, we need to get out there, make sure that they, they know. Uh, and, 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 and hope, and, but based on your conversation early on, uh, Pharaoh, it looks like there is some potential for. More money to come down than was in the governor's budget?
Uh, yes.
I mean, that's, I, I guess my hope would be to, and, and, and relative to our timeline. Uh, between us and presentation and the budget and all this stuff, there's some tactical advantages. To adding that on after the fact, rather than before the fact, when it goes across the street. Just, I don't want to elaborate any more than that, but thanks, Dr.
I know what you mean, so I'm willing to, to say, okay, put all that back in, leave it alone, and we'll wait for what, what we get from Richmond. If I could have a consensus from the board that if we got more money from Richmond, it would go directly to, um, bumping up the teacher salary, or, or. Employee salary, not just teachers, but employees in general, so, I, I, that's just my feeling, that's where I'd like to see us. Put, put it, and we may have a directive from Richmond that says it has to go into salaries, so you never know.
Yeah, pro- probably not, the, the way the House bill is structured, and I think if anything happens, the, you're probably going to see it come as flexible lottery dollars.
Ms. Manning.
So I would agree with Ms. McLeod that quality of life is very important for our teachers, and. That's what I've been hearing from so many teachers, specifically high school teachers, who are struggling with those, um, class sizes, or. Class loads of, student load of one hundred and fifty. And I think right now in Virginia Beach, we are paying our teachers a competitive salary. I'm not saying that, you know, I, I'd like to give teachers a twenty percent raise, I think what they do is, you know. It, it's extremely important, but we have to look at this as, are we, you know, M- Mr. Mira said that we're not being competitive, I believe. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mira, but we are not competitive in the area of paying teachers in the areas of master's degrees more money. We're not, is that, we're not competitive in that area?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this, I want to, I want to be competitive with the areas around us, and. So what I would like to see, something I'll throw out there, is I would like to hold off on the one-to-one access, so the one point five million, take that out. And, um, and then. I would like to see us add, under the unmet needs, um, the ten high school FTEs. I don't know what that comes to, do you know? Do you know, Mr. Keever?
You, you're saying, adding ten?
Adding ten.
Yeah.
Ten beyond the fifteen.
Yes.
Yeah, for the, uh, uh, the one in the unmet.
Well, seventy-six thousand.
It's roughly seventy-five thousand per position, so about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
So seven hundred, add, seven hundred and fifty thousand, add ten FTEs. Um, we don't have to add the two eighty-two for the buzzer system, because you said that's covered, right?
Right.
Um, and then, I would like to, I don't know how, I, I would like to add the rest toward master's degree programs. I don't know how that would come out, because you've got a, a large.
Need to pay them if they have a master's, increasing.
Correct, increasing the master's pay, yeah. And then, this probably, I don't know that this is necessarily a budget discussion, but I guess it kind of is, but if we're talking about teachers' quality of life. Um, I would like us to see us, I would like to see us reduce the professional learning requirements for teachers.
I'm definitely for that, I've been harping on that for years.
I mean, I would, I would love to see that, I, I think that, that's a, a discussion that we should have very soon, and. Um, that would help with the quality of life issue for our teachers. What, what is, does anyone know what the proposal is for city employees, have we seen those numbers yet, for raises?
Two percent.
Two percent.
Is that based off of the five-year forecast?
It's based on the five, they haven't done their budget yet, the five-year forecast.
Okay, and then I, I'll throw this out there upfront, since Dan, Mr. Edwards brought it up, I will not support another tax increase.
I don't see anything about taxes.
Nobody put anything out there about that. Oh, I thought, oh, I thought you were talking, you sent, you sent, you said, send the city council message.
No.
You said, add.
I'm talking about money coming from, additional money from Richmond being.
Oh, I thought you said, when we send it to city council.
No, no, I'm just talking about the budget timeline between us and city council.
Oh, I apologize, I misunderstood you.
And the fact that they, if we, you know, we, we will not likely have additional money from Richmond to plug into what we send across the street on March sixth.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, thank you.
You were, that was a significant misread.
Okay.
No, no one has mentioned, and, and we won't, no one has mentioned a tax increase. Let's make it clear, but, but as far as professional, um, learning, the twenty-two, the twenty-two hours that we require of our teachers would, would help. Considerably if you want to do quality of life, I've been talking about that for more than five years.
I will stand shoulder to shoulder with you.
And, and the thing of it is, is that you wouldn't believe how many of our teachers actually do more than twenty-two hours.
Most of.
Most.
Yeah, we did it, we had that.
But it's, it's the requirement of having that, and then, you know, not allowing them to do a rollover, but that, I'm not sure that that's part of our budget right now, but.
It's not a budget conversation, but I can tell you, just as a signal, that this is a conversation that we've already been having with senior staff this year, and that we have a. Team working on a proposal as we're speaking.
Excellent, okay.
We need it.
I, I think we need to discuss the technology, after Dr. Cashwell's presentation, thirty-four schools already one-to-one. I don't know how you just hit a brick wall with that, and, I mean, then it's going to be an equity issue, and. I, uh, and pull, yeah.
Price include, the price decrease included pulling back grades one through three at the schools that already have them and redistributing those.
Oh, okay.
To move towards a model that would be, if you're suggesting grades four and above, it would be redistributing those.
And I just can't imagine then, starting in third grade with. Or, yeah, starting in fourth grade, fourth is a big shift, you go from learning to read to reading to learn, and it's a big shift, and then all of a sudden, you're just going to hit them with.
Yeah, well, it doesn't say they're not going to have technology, just not on the line.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not going to be the same, and anyone who's. Taught in a, in a, in a one-through-three classroom with three or four computers can tell you that.
It's not fun.
That would not be, it, right now, what Amy's talking about, and what we've costed out. Would take the ratio in one-through-three to one point six students per computer, is that right, or miss?
Yes.
It's not just three computers, it's one point six.
Uh, Dr. Cashwell, I think we'll still weigh in on that.
Yeah, but it, it changes the model, not to the Chromebooks, and so, yes, it would reduce, it would mean pulling back the devices that we already have. In place and redistributing those to higher, to higher grades, or anywhere we might move along the line. But that, we're currently in the schools that are not one-to-one, the ratio is technically one point six to one. But that doesn't always look like a Chromebook or Windows laptop, that's, that includes all devices, and the way those are situated and deployed across a building would vary building to building. It wouldn't necessarily look the same.
So some might even be, not, not Chromebooks, but possibly even, um, iPads or whatever, okay.
Let me make a couple of, share a couple of thoughts. Uh, relative to technology, this might be one of those moments where input would be better than not. You have quite a few people out there who are using these devices, students, teachers, parents whose kids have them, and I think to unilaterally make a decision that we want to pull back on that. You, you may hear from, from folks about that, and so I'm, I'm curious if you would like us to provide you with some input on that, um, outside of our own assessment. Um, which is that people like it based on the data that we've been collecting, and that we use it, and that it's valued, and that there, uh, it, it supports learning, and it does all the things that Amy talked about. But I just think you may want to hear from your constituents on that particular issue before you make any decisions, sort of bold decisions to, to pull back large amounts of dollars. That folks, um, are anticipating, that's, that's a thought, I want to just transition to the.
But everywhere.
To the, uh, to the compensation conversation, I do, a couple of thoughts that I have, one is I want to make sure we are all. Also talking about the other pieces of the compensation package that are included in the budget in addition to the two percent, right, because there is an equity adjustment of two million dollars. That will impact people's salaries, we, so we're talking about fully funding that, so folks who are, um. Slated for an equity adjustment will see additional dollars in their compensation package, so that's part of it, we did mention, I think, I think you all understood. Uh, that above scale, uh, the point five percent savings above scale would be redistributed into the scale. In order to decompress some of the, uh, steps between years, so those areas where we're able to achieve that, that would also be additional compensation, that's a smaller. Range of people, but it would probably be in the earlier years of the scale, in the first ten years, and so the first ten years of folks would see a little bit. More stretching between steps, and so they would see that in their paycheck as well as part of the compensation package. Another thing which is an interesting thought, and it isn't budget-related, but it could be considered budget-related technically, um, regards to the PLP, is so if we eliminate requirements on the PLP in the past. Those have been considered part of their contractual days, um, and so, you know, that's how you ended up doing that. And so one of the reasons that that was put in place was because those days, those contractual days were extended over, over time, and so you could, if you technically eliminated some of those requirements. Consider that a give and take on the compensation factor, if you don't remove contract days, so there are a couple of things at play that are compensation-related, that aren't specific to an actual increase. And I do think it's at least fair to put those on the table, total consideration.
Ms. Weems.
Uh, I would like to hear from constituents about the technology, but how, what form are you talking about doing that?
I need to think about that a little bit, yeah, I need to think about that a little bit, I, um. I, um, I, I, I just, I'm, I saying that is a cautionary note. I'm a little concerned that.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, we have already, since the last workshop, been hearing quite a bit from teachers who are concerned that we're going to pull back on technology. And so I'm a little concerned that, um.
Frame the lessons.
You might, yeah, right, I mean, they're sort of used to and, and have, uh, the expectation that those resources are available to their kids and they're used to teaching that way. And it's been a long, thoughtful, considered, measured process that has engaged, um, our communities pretty deeply over time, uh, over these last three years. And so I think to make a kind of unilateral decision that we're going to shift our thought on that, I get the reason. So I'm not trying to sound defensive, I understand that it's related to budget. And so if the money's not there, the money's not there. So I'm not saying I don't understand the reason, but as a cautionary note, I think that's a big decision. That is more of a philosophical conversation than a budget conversation, which is earlier I was trying to push you in the direction of, I don't think you want to make that part of this year's budget conversation because I think it's a bigger, richer conversation than you can achieve in the next couple of weeks. If I could, I'll think with my team a little bit about how do we try to get you some feedback, um, in the next week or two around that. But, um, it's just, I think you, I think you want to hear about that before you make that call.
Ms. Manning?
Well, I think if we hear about that, I think that we should hear not just from our anchor schools, but from all of our schools.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree.
Okay, thank you.
Schools using it are going to, yeah.
So hearing from those who aren't as well as.
So is there anything else that we need to be discussing now that we have had this priority discussion? Mr. Edwards?
Unrelated to the budget, there was an envelope being passed around to members, our chair.
I got it.
You got it back?
I got everything back.
Sure, since I started it, I didn't want, I didn't know where it was.
We've saved two versions and we'll also, you already have the blank version, so we'll get the two new versions.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Holtz?
Um, this goes back to, and so we have another budget workshop scheduled for next week, um, as part of the agenda. You heard Farrell, we really are going to, are getting to that timeline where we're going to have to come up with some answers. And, and of course, we have another opportunity in March to have that dialogue, but there's a lot of work that goes on when things start to change, um, to get that budget ready to go across to city council. So we can't make that decision the day or the week before it has to go to council. So I'm, a reminder of that. If you have additional questions or additional thoughts, we would also ask, I want to tighten this up just a little bit. We would ask that you get those to us with more than forty-eight hours before the next workshop. Um, so that we can try to do, you know, it's just tough when we get them today to get you a really good answer, um, kind of thing. So if you could, uh, forty-eight hours to go prior to the next workshop, so that'd be by next Sunday. Um, and then we can try to get you those answers, uh, for the, for the following workshop.
Okay.
So what time next week?
Um, are we doing a four o'clock hour or three o'clock? Three o'clock start, three o'clock start next, next week.
I'm going to have it there.
You said three?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're done?
We are done.
Thank you.